All right, it's six thirty. We'll start the meeting.
Six thirty on that.
Six thirty.
It's good enough. So we do already have an executive on the agenda. Does anyone have a need to add another? Okay, and we do need to amend the agenda to add two new business items, a letter to town clerk, and certificate of highway mileage. Anyone have anything else?
Are these both on new business?
Yes.
Motion to approve agenda as amended.
On favor say aye.
Aye.
Anything on the minutes of December eighteenth?
I do, even though I wasn't here. There's a couple of comments I sent in. I just want to clarify. The concern I had with the Mecure Library was, I thought maybe they should provide a budget for their expenditures for the year for the voters ahead of time. And that if the fuel had gone down, maybe there was room for something like a ten percent cut. So just want to make sure that was said properly. That's all I got.
Okay. Anybody have anything else? All right, town managers report?
Okay, filed the claim with the insurance company of the driver that hit the Depot Hill Depot Hill road bridge, covered bridge last month. We were able to do the repair in-house. Was just under five hundred dollars, so we've submitted that to insurance. Semi-annual water and sewer bills have been sent due dates February third. Tax sale notices have been sent. Right now, there are seventeen properties that are eligible for sale. I'm sure that number will go down. Plans about sewer update. They're continuing to work on the main line. We've put in eight structures, so we're more than halfway there with the manholes and everything. There's a lot of, you know, pipe up here because of the distances between houses. So we're gonna be doing one-way alternating traffic up here pretty soon. They're just trying to clear the intersection out because we'd crossed the road there and it was... So it's moving along. They're gonna work until weather doesn't let them. I think we'll have it done here. So, yeah, it's been going good. We've had a couple of changes. Nothing major. We had one landowner who is like off, like behind a house who is not on town sewer. So we put a T in the line and across the road, so in case they need to hook up, it's easy to do. We are looking at a water line that was done years ago that I believe Beldon had done to a service at three thirteen. They've had horrible water pressure since it was done. So they came in and talked to us and were like, yeah, we'll just figure out what it is. We think that there might be a crimp in the line or something, so we're gonna fix that and they'll be on their way. Other than that, it's been going well. I also have a couple of other things. Well, here, I'll finish this. So in your packet, there is a regional select board meetup. I guess it's just lots of meeting, and it's for select boards, so it might be something that folks would be interested in. Lisa did give me the twenty twenty-four equalization study results for our appraisals. That's in there. The police, what they've been up to's been in there. That's it. Yeah, and that's probably what's going on right now. So guys are out filing a lot this week. It's been busy. They had the Chevy truck was down, had a caliper freeze, and we couldn't get to it. We don't have the tools for it, so Chad and I just picked that up at Earl's today, so it's back on the road. Other than that, I think things are pretty quiet, so.
Okay.
That is a bad news, you know.
Yeah.
The tax sale notices, is that only published in the town report, or is it published?
So, we don't do the tax, no, we have to, there's a whole process that we have to do with warning it in the paper. We have to send it to the individuals.
The list.
Give them an opportunity to pay or set up a payment plan, then we have... The list will, the properties will go, we have to publicly notice those.
Okay.
What happened from last year? Did they all end up?
I think there's one, one still that hasn't redeemed, so.
Oh, okay.
Yep.
Pretty good.
Yeah.
Yeah, because we only had three go, so.
Yeah.
And this seventeen, that's about what we've normally had, right, roughly?
Probably. That will go down. I mean, they always do.
Right, but I'm thinking this time of year, it's...
I think last year, we had ten or twelve, so.
Okay, so we're up a little, but not drastic.
Yeah. Yeah, it's not bad. I know you've been doing some payment plans with people. I mean, there's some that, you know, with the new, the new tax sale law, it's really not that different for us because we've been following the process and trying to work with people to... So, yeah, there really wasn't much that changed on that. I think maybe some timelines between when we sent stuff out might have been it, but it's been, it's pretty...
I bet it was like drastically different for some reason.
We did too, and then we're like, well, we're already doing this, really.
Yeah, okay.
Certified mailings. We had to do certified mailings, so, and I had to fill out everybody's repayment agreements to what would get them current by the end of the fiscal year. So all really they have to do is sign it if they want to follow a repayment agreement and be in compliance to not be up for tax sale anymore.
Yep.
But it's a matter of them opening their envelopes, deciding if they want to comply or not.
Yeah, so we send them, like, the plan before they come in now, which is, it's kind of like, here's your plan.
Yeah, yeah.
This is what you gotta do, so.
Okay. All right, anybody have any questions? Dave? Any select board member remarks?
I have one. I attended that Little Brook Solar meeting yesterday. There was only one landowner on it, myself. All the rest were lawyers, state employees. About ten of them, and they accomplished absolutely nothing, and it only lasted about ten minutes. So that's my report.
That's the one in the gravel pit, right?
Yeah.
Is that exclusively in the pit or in the field? Is it just the pit?
No, I think it's from outside in that field in front, but they didn't get into that. It was purely just... Then when they're planning for the next meeting, it was, it was an easily expendable meeting. I have two, but this was the worst. It was just nothing.
Do you want us to file party status on this one?
We discussed it. I, we'll see what everyone else thinks, but we discussed that when it first came up, and we all thought it was an ideal site for solar, so we had no...
I do, but I think we should, I would say that we should file anyway.
If they're, just in case something comes up.
If they're encompassing the field.
Then, yeah.
We should get noticed because we're the municipality anyway, but I can do it. I mean, we can easily look at the updates on the...
No, I thought we were automatically anyways.
On the website anyway. I mean, that's pretty easy to get on there and look at stuff.
This is not an act of fifty permit. It's just a...
Public Utility Commission, the park.
Publicity.
Any more select board member remarks? Public comment? Butch?
I would like to talk to you a little bit about the tax sales from the perspective of the Board of Civil Authority, Board of Abatement.
Oh, okay.
Just to bring the rest of the board up that hasn't been aware of what's happening. We're beginning to see, because we didn't see it for quite a few years, is a lot of people coming in and asking for abatement on water and sewer. And we've heard, we've heard many of their pleas. It's a trend that's growing. Every time we have one, we get, next time we'll get three. Depending on quite a few now that I think, and understanding, that are coming in. And so we're beginning to see that, that just people are choosing not to pay their water and sewer bill because they can't, basically. It's just, it's an expense they don't have the money for. But the most disturbing point is, we're beginning to see people coming in and asking us to abate their property taxes, totally. And by statute, that's allowable. The board has the authority to abate the property taxes on somebody that asks. Currently, we have just finished up with two requests on that that were denied. And the board is, the opinion the board has been that if we allow you to not pay your property taxes, your neighbor has to pay your property taxes. And then the town is on the hook for the ed fund. The ed fund taxes don't go away.
Oh, no, we know.
They just transfer to the town, and the town will have to figure out a way. So it's, and I think we're going to see, my feeling is we're going to see more of that coming forward just because of the economic stress that people have and the stress on the education fund taxes. So just be aware that I think the tax collector will be, you'll be discussing this further as we move forward. But currently, the board has not been amenable to allowing people just to not pay their property taxes. So we want you to be aware of that, but I'm afraid we're going to see more. It's doubled than the last year. We went from one to two. But, and I wouldn't be surprised to see two to four or more.
But they still have to follow under the...
They have to follow all the procedures.
Yeah, the seven criteria.
We're the last, well, they can come to us the minute that you start, you start looking for one.
But don't they have to, like, there's those certain reasons, like financial hardship and whatever.
There's a few hardships, or the board can just say, yeah, okay, we have that, we have that authority. And we, there are a few provisions in law that, and one of them is that they just flat can't pay their taxes. They just, they just don't have the ability to pay. So that's, that's difficult. And we would encourage everybody in town to file a homestead declaration when they file their taxes, so that they're eligible for that, that rebate on their taxes if they file a homestead declaration. And most troublingly, the last couple we've had, the people did not file their homestead declaration. And for some people, that's a, that's a big number. So we're watching, we're watching that. So that's, that's my report from the BCA.
Okay.
I'd like to talk to the budget, but I think I want to, do I want to do it now or do I want to do it before you vote?
Up to you.
Budget's on the agenda.
Yeah, you can...
It's on the agenda.
It's our next item. We can segue right into that. If there's no other public comment, we can go right into...
Thanks. I'm sitting here as a citizen of Pittsburgh, not in my official capacity, which ends tomorrow at about ten thirty. But I want to give you a little history on that. You guys, between you all and the manager, you've managed to pare the budget down to about a one point eight percent increase, plus or minus, depending on money coming in, money, that type of thing. That's a lot of, that's a very, very lot of. I personally have reviewed the previous budgets. Current budget, not so much. And you all found about twenty-seven thousand dollars two meetings ago. That was redundant spending, and so you were able to reduce your budget by twenty-seven thousand dollars. Those things are not happening going forward. A good budget, in my experience, and I'm going to say that, doing budgets for the last fifteen years ranging from multi-million to multi-billion dollars. A good budget is about three to three and a half percent increase based on the Consumer Price Index. So it's been the feeling of the current administration and the previous administration and the legislature. If we could stay in that area, we're staying about even. If we could drop below that, and so your budget this year at one point eight percent is technically a one point eight percent decrease in your spending capability in the year, next year's going forward. Because you're not keeping up with inflation. So I guess, and I'm going to hearken back to the days, and I think Split and Hooker can, will remember this, when you have a three-person board sitting downtown. That would always try to relieve the taxpayers of the burden of the ed funds by reducing the municipal taxes. And finally, finally, after a few years of doing that, the town was in serious financial troubles because the budget was not keeping up with the needs of the town. Just by trying to take the pressure off the ed fund. You can't do that anymore. The ed fund taxes are just so high. You can't reduce your budget enough to make up for the ed fund. So that's gone away. But that created a hell of a problem for the town for, I don't know, half a dozen years going forward, because you were in deficit, basically deficit spending for five or six years. You were in deficit spending, but you had the potential to be there. So my ask to you going forward, not this budget, this budget is set, done. Hopefully, you'll approve it tonight, and it's a very austere budget. And from my view, looking at and looking for, I've been looking for pennies. I haven't found a lot of them. You've done a great job. Is going forward, I think you need to think a little bit about in next year's budget of where you are and what services that you're going to want to cut to maintain a budget increase of one or two percent. I'm not advocating for a tax increase. Never, don't get me wrong, I'm not advocating for a tax increase or any of that, but I'm asking for a reality of what, and you've got a year, think about it, of what service that you would want to cut to keep your budget at two percent next year or one and a half percent. Do you stop doing reserve funds? Do you stop funding some, something in one of the various departments? You have an enterprise department or two that are making you money. I would hope that you would not take the money from those enterprise accounts because at some point, those enterprise accounts are going to need some money. They're building their future, and that's a good thing. And then I look at Forest and Parks at the state level. Forest and Parks is a million dollars or so from being totally not dependent on the taxpayers with various things that Forest and Parks does, so. And that's a good thing. I say a million, you know, their budget's, you know, probably a hundred million dollars. So, but they've done well. That's the kind of thing that I think, and I hope, you would look for in the future, is those type of things. Remember, when you cut something over here, and you want to do something over here, you've got to find a revenue source. So looking for a revenue source is never easy. Sometimes it's a tax increase, sometimes it's not. Believe me, I hate tax increases, but a good budget at three percent, I think you could look at that and maintain the level of service that you're giving to the citizens of Pittsburgh today. And I hope you'll take into account next year's budget. Because I hope to be sitting here next year and say, good job on a three or three percent, three and a half percent increase. And that's my soapbox, and I'll step off it and cover my patch up. Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you. I think that is good to remember.
Yeah. I wish the state would work harder just to keep the rest of the Florida.
Absolutely, we do.
And that's, and that is a good point, because we do often do that, you know, with the education piece, nearly eighty percent of a property tax bill, and we try to relieve taxpayers on this level, but at some point, we cut so much that now we're cutting services, you know, and not even really affecting people's tax bills, because it's still mostly education.
We talked about that this year.
In the last three years...
What service do we start thinking about? We talked about that this year.
Just so you know, and you've probably read about it already, in the last three years, from two years ago till this year's projected increase of about five point nine percent, is a thirty-three percent tax, thirty-three percent increase in the ed fund tax. Not sustainable.
No, no.
The problem is, to reduce that, to reduce spending in the ed fund, it's a political problem. And the Agency of Education has given the legislature two reports on what the problem is. Their next report is out, it's going to be what you need to do to solve the problem. Consolidation, consolidation of districts, reducing administrative staff, all those type of things. But it's a political problem.
They seem to add stuff.
And I'm going to give you an example.
I know.
Okay. I'm fortunate enough to, just to say this, because I can. I represent a, just a UU with eight or nine hundred thousand kids, all right? That's a good-sized UU, and, but they have a huge administrative burden, okay? I also represent a district that has, a total district, that graduates in three high schools, less than eighty kids. Proctor, Westfalen, and Holden. So, this is the political piece of the problem, okay? So the legislature says that we're only going to fund school districts that have X number of students because that's the only way to reduce costs. And we're only going to fund fourteen districts, and not the current fifty-two districts that we have today. So I would have to, your representative would have to come down from Montpelier and go to maybe Out of Valley and say, okay, you're doing okay, but we're going to consolidate the administration of this into one district per tech center. It's an easy, it's an easy example of consolidation, because there's fifteen tech centers in the state. So that'll sell. But then she's going to have to go to Proctor and maybe walk into the Proctor School Board and say, this is the political piece. You can keep your school open, but you're going to get no state funding. And how will that come? First of all, your current representative would not be representative next time. And that's the political piece of it. And that's the hard work that the legislature is facing and facing and the administration is facing. Now, people are demanding reduction in property taxes. This is, there's going to be several proposals to make that reduction and see where it goes. There's a six point one billion dollar problem in capital needs for the schools across the state. It's three, I think it works out to like three hundred million a year for the next twenty years. That's a lot. That's a lot. So these are the things that are going to affect you locally and your thoughts as you prepare your budget. And as I say, it's a political problem that's, needs to be solved. Thirty studies later, we still haven't, the legislature's done nothing. So hopefully, hopefully the alarm bells are ringing. I know the alarm bells are ringing. We know that. So I wish you the best of luck.
But to add to that, because my position, I got email from my director on one of these committees up in Montpelier. I think there's one, one or two legislators and one or two senators. Every single other person on that committee is from the ed department. It's this giant echo chamber, and it's like, bring in some people from outside with some different ideas, but they don't. They just sit there in their echo chamber, and that's, and that's the political part, part of the political part of the problem.
That was the Committee on the Future of Education in Vermont.
Yes.
And there were four, I think, legislators on that.
Yeah, I think there was two senators and two...
There were eight members of the V's, what we call the V's. Vermont Principals Association, Vermont Teachers Association, the Vermont Superintendent's Association, Vermont Trade Schools Association. There were like seven or eight of the V's, and they were on that board. And I can, especially the SEA and the union of... So that's what, that's what the legislature's facing. It's going to take some real intestinal fortitude to make some decisions, and I hope they come in. The public's demanding it. They approved it on November fifth, when they changed the structure of the legislature. We'll just see where it goes. Good luck.
Thanks.
Swan song.
Well, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, so we're in budget.
So on top of your budget, there's a little sheet that Ann made that shows what the total budget amount is and the amount to be raised by taxes for highway and general fund and then the village fund. So those are, those are the numbers. It does show that, so the taxes that would need to be raised are at one point four percent, and that's... So that's, you know, what the amount that needs to be raised by taxes for the general fund. And highway is, I just had it and I forgot it.
One point seven.
One point seven. Is that what it is? I thought it was, will it be less than that after? Yeah, it'll be less than that after. Hold on, I'll tell you in just a second. And I'll probably find it before me.
They're a little over five percent when we started out?
Yep. So, but, you know, we did find like the fire truck thing, which actually I gave Pat that stuff today, so she's probably going to take that, take care of that before the next meeting. It doesn't accrue daily interest. It's an annual thing, so we're fine with, we could pay it, you know. We'll just take care of it, so. So the highway amount to be raised by taxes... Hold on.
One million fifty-five, two...
I know, why is it different than the number on the sheet?
No, I'm just looking for the percentage. That's one point seven two percent. So the property, so the amount to be raised by taxes would be one point three seven percent.
Total.
Total. So, I don't know if you guys are looking at like our current budget this year, but we have seen some revenue increases, which is good. Like rec has been up a lot for...
Day camp.
Yeah, for registrations for camps. I know it doesn't affect these budgets, but water and sewer is definitely looking good. What else did we? PD's at like seventy-three percent of the year already in revenues because of the amount of tickets we've been writing, and Beldon has helped on that. So, you know, there is some extra revenue. It's not millions of dollars, but it is definitely going to help. So, I mean, those are really the ones we can somehow create revenue, you know. But, yeah.
So the ticket, ticket proceeds go into the general fund?
They go into the PD, and then it is the general fund, yeah.
We're also looking at possibly improving your facilities, so.
So Chief and I were discussing that today too, like, we'd like to see where we end up with Beldon, just to see what we have that's money that's outside of a budget that, you know, could go towards something for a building or renovations or whatever. It's a start, so.
Didn't you include something in here? Maybe I misplaced it on the grant list changes?
We won't have grant list changes yet.
No, we won't have that till April, after April first.
I thought she had something in here, maybe I...
Well, Lisa gave you the...
Oh, the equalization.
Right in the front.
So we won't really know where that grant list is going to end up for next year.
Lodge it on April first, so we won't know till after that.
That's on leases.
Yeah.
I know we're up quite a bit last year, so.
No, I think it's going to be up. I was just wondering, when you look at the increase in the tax revenue.
Sixty-three percent.
You've got to look at where you are with your grant list. That's really what dictates it, so.
The numbers come out when we get it. It's all, the schedule is really not...
No, it's not. You're right.
Right, because we already have to make a decision on a budget without really knowing all the numbers.
So one number we might want to look at next year, and Ann and I were talking about this today, is the village fund, because that reserve account has almost two years of a budget in it right now.
Really?
Yeah, so we might want to, next year, look at, see if that's really necessary that much.
The village fund, if I'm not mistaken, that's to maintain sidewalks and the lighting.
I thought it was just lights.
Because if you remember Donna...
Doesn't any amount of power do our lights?
Yeah. It used to take, years ago, we...
Well, when we, wasn't it when we changed the lights, we used some of that funds to change to more lighting? And didn't we take some money, or we were going to take some money out that one time for sidewalks?
Yes.
Yes. I don't know if, remember if we did or not, but we were talking about it.
We talked about, yeah, when we did the, for the school and the highway.
Oh, yeah, that never ended up happening, but right.
Never, right.
That one we wanted to look at too, even if it's a couple thousand dollars.
I was down on that one, remember that?
You sure did. I remember that very clearly. I'll be remembering that for the end of my days.
Our own board member didn't vote for it, so.
I know, that was too bad. Anyway.
So I think that should change that a little bit.
Yeah.
When you look at what's gone on, so, you really just look around and see.
Yeah.
I think we have been surprised by that over the last few years. Once it comes in, it's like, oh.
What's up?
Which does make a difference in the...
Well, what we end up paying in taxes, for sure.
Okay, well, we've talked about the budget for many, many months now, and I think we've gotten it down to...
I have one last question. I have one last question before we do that. Dave, on this budget, every department was involved with setting up their budget. Everyone, every one of the leaders of the budget sat down and met with you and Ann, and they're comfortable? And they're comfortable, every one of them?
Yeah, I mean, we've sat down with them a few times, so. Ann sat probably more than me, but...
The only one I didn't sit down with was Helen. She kept telling me she had the sheets, and she never gave them to me. So I just... So I just kinda based her, her budget off from historic. But I have sat down and talked to all the other department heads several times.
Okay, I'm only asking that 'cause I wanna make sure they're all on board with what they have in front of them.
Is what we do for the process is we give them their budget with the blank lines for the next year. And they do their wish lists, you know, what they want and everything, and then we meet and talk about it. And, and we've met with Sean and Chad, well Chad is in this budget, so, quite a few times. And, um, yeah, we wanna keep them part of it for the, I mean, it's their budget.
No, that's been our charge, that they be part of it. I missed a couple meetings, I wanted to make sure that, I know Chad was in and others, but I wanna make sure every department sat down and went through it and they're comfortable with what they got in front of them.
I think it's been working out well too, like, when I came on board, I started, I asked them if when they were doing, you know, when they were buying stuff to actually code it with the numbers in their budget for the line items, so they would know. But I think that's been helpful with, with all of them, because they're really seeing their budget every month and, and using it, so.
Well, it's their budget to run anyway, so we wanna make sure everybody's comfortable with that. That's the only question I have, to make sure all our department heads have been on board with what they've done and been part of it. I think we're very fortunate for the department heads that we have in the town.
So I know you're waiting for a motion, so I will make the motion to approve this budget. Let's see, general fund, total budget a million eight twenty-seven eight eighty-three, with a total of a million four oh four one twenty-three to be raised by taxes. Village fund amount at seventeen thousand. And the highway fund, total budget of a million two thirteen five fifty-five, with a total of a million sixty-five thousand two hundred and five to be raised by taxes.
No seconded.
Any further questions, comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
It's a bearable budget.
Well, it is. Lower than what we get even.
Oh, you can do twenty for three and it's less than.
I don't think we try to holler too much at it.
Great budget, guys, great budget.
We have the sand, it's on salt roads in June, I think.
Cause there's some things that.
The weather is, we might have to.
Never know.
All right, so let's, um, continue with old business, opening a class two, three, and four roads to ATVs.
Yeah, this is just kinda an update, Mike is here and I did give him, um, one of these ordinances. So we've got a few ordinances in your packet, Bakersfield, I think we had that before. The Whiting one, which John had sent me, and I think Ann had picked it up too. And then Newport, which seems to be the one that we like the most. So I did just make copies for Mike and John to look at. I, my, my suggestion would be, I mean, I think this is great anyway, and we've been talking about it off and on for months, but maybe to start a little committee and maybe Mike and, we should definitely make John like the head of it, 'cause he's not here. I think that that would be a good way to start it, and maybe with a select board member and myself and whatever and. Move forward with it and.
And just, and then just write and help to start getting going on the ordinance. Would it, just out of curiosity, what was it that specifically you liked about this versus the other ones?
Well, Ann was like, she was loving it, so she told me more about it, but.
Is it just really concise and, actually, it's not, actually, it's longer.
But it covers, from what I, can't remember which one was which, but it covers, I think, pretty much everything.
Okay.
A lot of them have some of the same stuff in them, but.
It may be a cut and paste and, and kinda mix the two, Bakersfield and Newport to make one solid ordinance for Pittsburgh, I think.
And there may be, well, line out a Benson that we want or something, you know.
But I mean, between the two, I mean, you cover every liability for the town you could really think of.
The only thing that I was, you know, as I went and looked at the, the Vtrans roadmaps for Newport, because it showed like they go right through their town. And I'm like, I know the state won't let you drive on a state road, but their, their road that goes to the middle of town is a class two, which is really odd. So they opened it, that's why they can do it.
I remember when this happened, it was a big deal, it hit the papers.
No, we can, we can cross seven, you just can't go down it, so. You know, I think that's the thing, is getting the committee together and actually coming up with what roads and then having some hearings and going from there.
I agree. Do we need a motion on that, or is it just a consensus?
I'm willing to, what you guys want, I'm willing to work with you on that, and it kind of affects me, so. I'm willing to do it at night, I don't have much time during the day.
Yeah.
All right, well, we'll get, we'll talk and.
Yeah. I'll let John know that he's the new chair.
There you go.
And the vice chair and the secretary.
What's the procedure to get an ordinance approved?
We have to have hearings and bring.
Two hearings?
Posted and then.
I don't know, they have to get the timeframe, but.
We have to do a few more, I think we have to do five notifications with an ordinance, right? It's more than the regular, it's more than three, I think it's five.
His encouragement would be to get it done as quick as possible, so you can get started in the process. I don't think it'll take a lot to put together.
No.
It's all pretty well put together between the two ordinances, just mix and match the two and come up with something.
Sooner we have a doc back to vote on.
Think we found the template from the league that all these are based on anyway, so.
And it'd be a, somewhat of a revenue source for the town too, wouldn't it? A town permit, yearly permit for.
Revenue source is good.
All right, great, so get moving on that. So you guys will work it out amongst yourselves when you're gonna meet?
So there would be a town permit?
Could be.
Per vehicle? Could be.
I thought that was.
No, some of these have got permits.
Bakersfield does it.
Not a registration. Right.
And then you get a sticker like a snowmats, like you do a snow machine, like you join a club, that's kinda like your permit.
But that's not a town.
You could make it a town.
But you, it, it would be, you could almost treat it just like your, uh, the old transfer station permit. Figure the town to get the permit to utilize.
Or they buy it through the club.
There's no club yet, Dave.
We're getting there.
Clubs come in when they're private property to deal with.
All right, great.
I think we need to look into that a little bit. It's all right for the town to collect a vehicle fee for use of the road.
Yeah, well, that's what the committee will.
I will have the new chair of the committee.
One of these from years ago said that, and it was something we found somewhere, I can't remember where, maybe, maybe Chief gave it to me. Said we couldn't collect.
I think there's something about.
I remember at the last meeting, he was gonna look into the legality of.
Mike was?
We're gonna have to find out if that's changed.
I think there was, that's a sticker with Bakersville, ten bucks.
Just Newport charged.
Just a sticker.
I don't think so, no. I think it was just Bakersfield that charged.
Bakersville Town Membership, that's how they, that's how they write it. There's a couple things too, so probably how it's labeled.
I don't think we can control who's on and off the road. We can't, like, permit people on the road, that's what my take was on it, but.
Yeah, you're gonna need to look into that a little bit, we don't want to go off and around.
I think we found that in a statute too, like, what you were in one day and we're going through a bunch of stuff, so. Don't suck me into this.
We got the committee all set up, good. All right, great. Well, great, thank you. Code of Ethics Investigation and Enforcement Ordinance.
So you guys had so much fun talking about this last time. We do have to do this ordinance, and, um, it's in your packet again. We do have to follow it as in adopting an ordinance with.
Yeah.
So, there, yeah, unfortunately, we don't have a choice.
Fortunately, they can't find some other things to do up there, I guess.
Yeah.
Waste of paper.
What's going on?
Oh, wow.
Doing a tour.
Members in the ceiling, I guess.
Probably looking for the new chair of the ATV committee.
He's running it. All right, what do you need us to do? Do we need to?
Make a motion to start the ordinance process, whether.
I'll make the motion, we start the ordinance, the town of Pittsburgh, on the ethics. Second it.
Any further discussion?
Somebody repeat the motion, I'm sorry.
To start the process on the.
Start the process, all right.
Again, it has to go through hearings, just like, you know. Right, so.
We're not adopting this, we're gonna start.
Nope, so, but we have to start the process, 'cause unfortunately, we have to.
This thing has gone nuts.
I know.
Yeah, it's definitely got a problem.
Maybe it's breaking at the right time.
Yeah. If you have taken the time to read the legislation, this, this sample from the league is very vague as it pertains to the legislation. Legislation is pretty demanding a lot.
Just unplug it.
And it's, uh, it was not. Any what? Heavily debated.
Is it, I mean, is this, is this adequate though, to fit in what is required?
If that's what the league has pulled together for you, I'm sure it's adequate to satisfy the law. But you have to. I'm sure there's a lot of, I haven't seen it, I'm sure there's a lot of references in there to state statute.
So what was the impetus the legislature felt this was needed?
The, uh, may I, Madam Chair?
Yes, you may.
Thanks.
Very proper, it's good to hear that.
There was a bill that the Government Operations Committee was working on very late in session for ethics for, uh, government offices, statewide office, and local offices like representatives and senators and that type of thing. And it really tightened up financial reporting, it tightened up several areas of that, it tightened up, uh, conflict of interests and, and those type of things for state government, okay? And that, that's kinda sailed through the committee, and I think most of the people in the legislature said, oh, okay, sure, we're being held to a higher standard and, and that's probably okay. But then, uh, the bill was headed to the floor and it got pulled and sent back to GovOps. And the next thing you know, it comes out with this whole section on municipal codes of ethics. And some, some communities are asking for this, were asking for this, but I'm not sure what the, what the impetus was to put it in this bill. Bill came to the floor and it was heavily debated. It was, uh, we tried to amend it, Representative Brennan offered an amendment on it. Now, I offered an amendment on it and, and both of them were, were turned down, as you might expect. But I, I think we all thought that if the league, and if the league built the code for the towns, that would be the proper thing to do, because that's what the league does. We thought, some of us thought, and, and, and that it was not up to the legislature to how, for how do you run your railroad?
They can't run their own railroad.
Interesting, what brought upon that they thought they had to bring down this on the, uh, the towns, the towns do such a nice job.
We're, we're one town, there's two hundred and fifty-two of them now. And some towns have some issues. My problem with it is that, you know, we're a volunteer community, basically. And we wrap in a lot of volunteers to do the work, and they're caught up in this. It goes way beyond you guys. And I, and I look at Brandon, who has a citizens' budget committee, and they're covered by this. They have to take the training, they have to do some, some, some of the work that's, that's required for you all or other elected officials or appointed officials, your, your department heads will have to do this. And that'll filter down eventually to, uh, the workers. So, yeah, there's, and there's an extensive list of who is covered by this. I don't know how many, Dave, is the list in the?
It's in the ordinance.
It's right on the ordinance. Well, it goes from A to O, so how many numbers those letters are.
It's a very extensive list about who's covered by this. And so it's, yeah. And it talks about, uh, conflict of interest, it clearly defines what a conflict of interest is. And it demands that if you meet the criteria of a conflict of interest, that the member has to refuse themselves or the board has to refuse the member from the hearing. So.
I wish I had an idea of what they're thinking about, mostly small towns, it's almost impossible for something not to come over on any little thing. Not big things, I think everyone's very responsible on, but this is way overreaching.
I agree. I, I, I agree with you, Mark, it is, it is an overreach. If, if they needed to do something, they should've let the league do it. And at least bring it back, the league bring it back to the, to the legislature for another look. Because there are, the, the league represent, is supposed to represent all towns equally. But, you know, you get into some of the, the larger towns that have a lot of these positions that are listed, are salary positions, then, um, then, yeah, then, then they need to look at that. I know, uh, I, I serve on the, on the Board of Civil Authority and, and, and I'm not gonna retire on the honorary we get from the BCA for our work, but some towns do have, you know, members of BCAs that are, that are compensated in, in, in a big way. So, I, I think, I think the, the ordinances. The legislation demands more from the towns than you deserve. However, it did pass, and it passed the House and the Senate. I think it, I think the governor let it go without his signature. And I think he just gets sick of the veto in bills. But I think, I believe he let it go without his signature and, uh, so now, uh, now you're in, you're in a position of having to approve, present, improve an ordinance to meet the law. And I don't think you have a choice. I don't think you have a choice. There's a lot of shells in the, in the, in the statute citations. There's no, there's no wills, it's all shell.
I just feel that in most, especially the smaller towns, if someone wants to assist the town in some way, a lot of people are gonna turn their backs.
I know, that's the, that's.
The good thing is, it's a train the trainer, training. Originally, the bill came out with, uh, everybody had to attend the class. Now it's a more of a train the trainer type thing, if I, if I read it correctly.
That's the way I read it, yeah.
Dave and I've had, spent quite a bit of time on looking at this.
Like basically, Dave's just gonna have to take it.
It's a train the trainer, so it's not quite so onerous.
Select board members aren't on here.
Oh, they're there.
Yes, they are.
We're there. Legislative body, any member of a legislative body, it's in there. We're, we're number one, we're even all that.
Oh, I was, I skipped over that, I just started going to A, that's why.
Don't be doing that up there. We'll get up there and repeal it a little more. Go repeal that section of law.
Yeah, just repeal it.
There's quite a bit of repeal, uh.
There's a lot of repealing. I just gotta get it to the floor.
I know. All right, well.
Anyway, that's my spiel on that, I'm sorry to.
No, and I think, I appreciate the explanation, I'm sure we all do. So because we have to and have no choice, we had a, we had a motion, we had a second, all in favor, say aye. Aye, any opposed?
No. Gotta be one just for.
We have town report dedication photos on the agenda.
I just need to know, but we already talked today, you've got photos to give me, we've got a dedication. We're good to go.
Yep. Okay, um, anything, actually, let's do, um, before we do orders, um, uh, letter to town clerk?
Yeah, um, just a thought to put out there, on the, uh, we had this situation come up when we had the last payment to the school district. They were harping on our town clerk to get them a check. I think it might be our consideration to send the town clerk a, a letter and suggest that she wait to the absolute last day to cut that check, so we don't lose any interest on our account on it. And don't let, don't get bullied into putting something in early, if that's the case. Just a suggestion to the board to think about, I mean, because we have to suggest to the. Uh, just a suggestion to the board to think about, I mean, 'cause we have to suggest to the, you know, her that she might do that, 'cause our interest, we get off what's in our account, is pretty critical to part of our budget. That's my suggestion.
They can just run it by her, it's fine.
Yeah.
But we wanna make sure that it's, it is relayed, and then writing is fine by me, but I just, that, that's my thought. It's your pleasure, but that's my thought.
Yeah, no, I don't think that's a bad idea, and if Dave's willing to run that by her.
Then, I mean, certainly run it by her, and if she...
Think she wants a letter from us, so then back her up?
She wants a letter to back her up, then we, then we come back and we revisit it. But...
It should be treated like any other appropriation or anything else, you know?
Well, yeah, you don't, you don't say it's paying it before or...
That's a biggie.
It's a lot of interest.
Yeah, it is.
Yeah, it is.
Okay, great.
You get an answer on how she feels about it and bring it back to us?
Absolutely.
All right, thanks. All right, certificate of highway mileage.
So this is just the annual certification we have to send to V-Trans, we didn't have any changes for anything this year, so it's pretty simple. Um, and it's in the packet to be signed, so just looking for board approval on that one.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any other questions? All in favor, say aye.
This brings us revenue.
Yes, it does.
It actually went up this year, so that was kinda nice, yeah.
Is this the mileage here?
Yeah.
All right, any questions on orders? I don't know either. No, I guess you can...
Extra order sheet, Dave?
Nope, nope, that's it. That is it.
All right, we can start signing that.
I'll pass those on, please. There's payroll on there too.
Well, I have, I did have one question.
On the orders?
Joe's not here, and I, I know he'd want to ask us, and first response door and operator, do they have to replace a whole door?
We replaced the, the electric, the door was the mo... Yes, we had to do a bunch of stuff to it. It was older than a boom mobile, I think. Yeah, we went down and looked at it, it was pretty, it was, it was not good, so.
Had to be something drastic for two thousand.
Yeah, yeah, overhead, was it overhead door, what, none of it, yeah.
Don't need a door falling on our new, your boom, or our new ambulance, or whatever it is.
No, and Bob's asked if we could get some, um, quotes to paint inside the building, it's pretty dingy, so. I've got one so far, so we'll get a couple more, and then when that comes.
To paint the inside of the, uh...
I know Josie painted.
Oh, absolutely, she does, she did the church, done a few other things.
I will get a hold of her.
She does it all.
Did not know that.
Did a very nice job in the Congregational Church. Good kid.
Yep, she did a great job with us, actually.
I know, I saw her out, like, a bunch, doing, you know, trimming trees and bushes and just doing good landscaping.
Yeah, it was nice.
Good worker.
Like, actually caring for the trees and plants, you know?
She like saved us on Pittsburgh Day that morning, remember? Had like this planner down at the rec, and it, there was nothing in it, it just looked terrible. I'm like, Josie, we got an emergency, we need some plants and flowers now, and she came over and had it done.
That's awesome. Thanks.
Do you date these, Dave?
What is, what do you got? The ordinance?
The Code of Ethics thing.
We have to do a whole thing on the bottom of it, when we had the hearings and when it was, so, yeah.
Oh shit, is that what I said?
Add a bunch of stuff to it.
So you're gonna pass it.
I didn't realize it went by.
Well, you can cross it out if you want.
Or you can send another one around.
Actually, it was a PO to buy an excavator, but you just signed.
No, I didn't see that.
You do that, Mr. Atherton, and then there's trouble.
I signed it.
You gotta read it.
Then we'd be using that document.
You guys read your packets, that's all we use.
It's gonna take a long time to sign everything if you do that.
All right, if there's nothing else, if I could have a motion to go into executive in accordance with 1VSA 313A, where premature general public knowledge would clearly place municipality or person involved as substantial disadvantage to discuss the appointment, employment, or evaluation of a public officer or employee, provided that a public body must make the final hiring or appointment decision, and explain its reasons for the decision in open meeting. 1VSA 313A 3 to include the town manager. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.